Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call to order the Pennsylvania County Fire and Rescue Commission meeting. Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty P M., located at thirty-nine Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia, two-four-five-three-one. First item on the agenda, caller roll please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Here.
Ben Meeks.
Present.
Alan Casper.
Here.
Ward Roland.
Here.
Tim Casale. Brian Shields.
Here.
Jason Lovelace. Kermit King.
Here.
Steve Stallings.
Here.
Coleman Mayhew.
Here.
Bert Settlers.
All right, thank you. Next one's gonna be a moment of silence, and I do ask y'all to, uh, during this moment of silence, keep bird in your prayers and, uh, remember him during this time, and also the state trooper that was hit on twenty-nine. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right, that brings us down to additions or revisions to the agenda. Gentlemen, take a moment to review your agenda there as it's presented, and we'll take any revisions or additions to that. Okay, yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah, so it's a, it's a long one tonight, so don't forget it's on the back page as well. It goes all the way to number seventeen. And I did place it on there, but I'm gonna go ahead and request for item B, radio concerns, to be removed from the agenda. So that would move everything up just one line and would delete B. All right, any other revisions or additions? Here none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the change to the agenda.
So moved, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second and discussion on a motion. Caller roll please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. All right, now I need an approval on the agenda. So the agenda as it's, as it is, uh, seen, except for item B, is now striked off.
So moved.
Got a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Do I hear any discussion on a motion? Here none, caller roll please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. That motion carries. Moves us down to item seven. Take a few moments and review your minutes. This is from the August meeting. We did not have a meeting last month, so it's be August twenty-twenty-five minutes. After you've reviewed them, we can entertain a motion to accept them or make changes. All right, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as they are?
Make a motion.
Got a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, got a second. Do I hear any discussion on a motion? All right, here none, caller roll please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes, all right, thank you, gentlemen. That brings us down to item eight. Director Key, do we have any presentations?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings us down to item nine. Do we have any here another citizen signed up?
No one signed up, sir.
Moving right along. Brings us down to item ten. Chief Fowler, Fire and Rescue Association reports.
I don't have anything. Do we get to some of the other items?
Okay, thank you, sir. Brings us down to item eleven. County staff reports, Director Key.
Yes, sir. The, uh, just reminder to everybody, the aid to localities funding is available. Um, packets have been delivered to all the stations. That's money from the state that has passed through the county. It's about fifteen thousand dollars per department. Uh, that is for fire purchases. Um, the four-for-life funding is also available. I've got the packets. I'm passing them out now. That is for EMS expenses. Uh, that is due back in February. That, those funds do not carry over. So we need to make sure all that gets turned in. I know it's a little late, but everybody should be spending and documenting it, and all they gotta do is fill out the paperwork and get it back in. That's reimbursable. A reminder of the electric vehicle lithium ion battery training. Uh, it is a requirement by the state for all firefighters to participate in. Uh, it is online, so it's just takes a couple of hours to sit through it and do it, but it's, it's needed. Uh, the nearest reporting, reminder that's taken over from the, the Nefers reporting. Um, that everybody, all departments should have been contacted in September. Um, if they haven't been contacted and set up their nearest reporting, please contact me. I've got a phone number where we can get everybody up and running. That's gotta be up and running by January, and it has been proposed that that could possibly affect your ATL funding if you're not doing the reporting to the state by next July. So that, that's big on the state part. Uh, we're in the third round of the portable radio purchase. Um, we have purchased, where we put the order out, uh, the radio should be in in December. Hopefully, when that way, we'll have them ready to pass out in January. Uh, the radio system upgrade, we have got that in the mix and going. Uh, we should finalize all the paperwork. I think it's the first week of November, and that'll be a year-long project that hopefully we'll have up and running by next August. We shouldn't see any disruptions in the radio system. Uh, the radio preventative maintenance, that was started October the twentieth. That's this past Monday. Um, visiting all the fire departments to make sure your radios and every, all portables, um, they're doing the preventative maintenance on. Just reminder to please have all the portable radios at the stations when they come by. Uh, the schedules have been sent out, so just make sure everybody's, uh, can get them in to where they can work on them. Um, I got the Chesterfield Insurance packet back just the other day. I think it was Thursday. Um, we'll sit down and go through that. They had some recommendations, some things that can be done, some things that can't be done. Uh, the Stryker contract was approved by the Board of Supervisors Tuesday night. Um, that was, I did a three-year contract on that to try to lock in a better price, and that maintenance will start up in January and February, and we'll get the schedule out for that. And that is all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the director? Appreciate, uh, the work put in for the Stryker contract, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for approving that. That equipment is, uh, equipment we use on every single call that the truck goes out on, so it has to be maintained, and it costs a lot of money, so we appreciate that. Um, couple reminders there. Like the director said, the electric vehicle class, guys, is required, so make sure if you're on stations out there that you're making, make sure your folks are following up with it. If they have a cornerstone account, they must complete it individually. And, um, the portable radios, director, uh, you said we third round. How many, how many radios will this put us up to, I guess?
It'd be three hundred portables.
So we're about halfway?
Yes, sir.
So about halfway on the radios. And I know there's discussion trying to figure out how to work on the mobiles next, so, uh, all right, thank you, sir. That brings us down to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? I had one item on here, and this is gonna be, uh, Chris, you can answer, I guess, but, uh, it was when Scott was filling in. It was on this solar farm training. They were going, Scott was gonna reach out and get contact information for all of them, and their, I have their addresses posted. Did we, was we able to get, get that done? Okay, good deal. That way maybe we can reach out and just try to make sure we're getting training done in all the areas, so. All right, thank you. All right, any other unfinished business? All right, here none. It brings us down to new business. Item A, uh, Board of Supervisors Communication, Mr. Mary Whittle.
None to report there, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, item B, Budget Committee. Uh, that'd be myself. So, um, we kinda got a little bit of a surprise, but no big deal. Uh, they are, the board is asking, or I should say, the Finance Committee is asking for the, um, budget to be submitted a month earlier this year than the, uh, the request to be submitted earlier, and so since we didn't have a meeting last month, we didn't realize that was gonna take place. Um, and so we had to hurry up and put a Budget Committee together to go ahead and start, um, getting the, uh, proposal put together for Fire and Rescue. So what we done was, um, and I hope y'all don't wanna attack us, but we just used the same committee as last year. Uh, it was myself, Vice Chair Kermit King, and then the Association, uh, Chief Fowler, Chief Morakas, and then, uh, Scott and Chris, the directors. We, we sat down and met this past week, put together the initial proposal, and, uh, and now that'll go to the, I guess, Finance Committee, and, uh, we, we're planning to meet one more time to kinda bring everything together, and then hopefully have a budget to send to you guys to be able to review what it, what the proposal is. I would say, when's that gotta be submitted, Chris?
I have to do that by November twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth, so, um, I would hope maybe, um, by the December meeting, we have something definitely on paper to show everybody, and, uh, any discussion, Chris, Dean, y'all wanna bring up on the budget? Okay, all right, good deal. Any discussion from the commission? Awesome, thank you. All right, that brings us down to EMS Fire Billing Committee update. Uh, I'm just going to defer. This is Chief Fowler.
We've worked on some of it. We've talked about revisiting EMS to look at those rates with Medicare and Medicaid in mind. We have way undershot the budget on what it's costing for the drugs in the new program, and Chris, do you know where the ordinance stands now? Is that, I know the last we were told they were rewriting it.
Yeah, I, I don't have an update on that yet.
Okay.
With me being out a couple of months, I didn't, wasn't able to follow up on it.
Okay, if you'll check on that so we can follow through with it.
And Chief Fowler, I did reach out to the county attorney, but it's probably been a month or two ago, a- and he said they had written an ordinance, but they didn't really like your verbiage, your language, so his group was, had scrapped that and started over, so I guess we just need to get an update where that stands. Um, as far as the EMS billing, guys, we review that every year anyway, um, but we definitely have discussed it. This kinda come up the other night when we was talking budget as well. Um, nobody really knew what to put in there for, um, to the, to budget for the drugs, the pharmaceuticals now, because all that used to be handled differently. Now the agents, individual agencies, public safety, and all the volunteer agencies are having to buy their own drugs, and so we're kinda just throwing something at the wall and see what sticks, and then we gotta go from there. And we probably really won't have a full picture for another six months to a year, but we just know right now, at least I know a grunting of the money we budgeted is gone, because those drugs are expensive, so, and you gotta have them. You can't say we're not gonna order them, so, and I've, thank, talking to, uh, the folks at Public Safety and Casey and them, they're in the same boat. Most of the initial supplies have been used and restocking, and the money's been depleted, so, uh, appreciate the committee working on that, and just keep that in mind. Um, you know, we definitely need to try to factor in, you cannot itemize bill for the drugs, but if we need to adjust the rates, uh, for the entire transport, that's where we can help try to make up a little bit of the cost. Any, uh, questions on that from the commission? All right, here none. We're gonna move down to mutual aid SOP. Uh, so I brought this up back in August, um, and the, was supposed to be sent to the Association, and, um, I guess we'll let Chief Fowler speak on it, on the, uh, mutual aid SOP.
I'm assuming you're speaking on what we discussed about if an agency was on a call as a mutual aid, not counting.
Correct.
The Association has discussed it, and they wanted to bring it back to the next meeting. Not only do they want to look at the mutual aid for EMS, but they wanna look at fire, and they ask people to think about it, come back to the next meeting, bring their recommendations, so that the same policy would follow through to fire as it does for EMS if we're gonna adopt it.
I agree with that. Okay, anything to add to that, gentlemen? Um, I still stand on, and I, and I appreciate the Association's work and who else is working on the committee. Um, we've done three studies now, at least, and that last two I know have said that it's bad practice, and we should stop counting against the agencies that, if you've got a truck out the door and you're on a call, and a second call comes in, that counts against you and your statistics, but you already was obligated to a call. You were on a call, and so, um, I don't really know how we're helping each other out, but then we're getting penalized for going to mutual aid, so I hope that gets addressed, and I appreciate y'all working on that. All right, item F, that brings us down to highway. Uh, I'm sorry, it would be item E, now everything moves. Brings us down to highway safety incidents. Uh, gentlemen, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I'm sure all of you have seen the news recently. We had, uh, two pretty significant, uh, incidents happen on U S Highway twenty-nine in Pennsylvania County, and a matter of fact, within about two to three miles of each other. Um, I think it was eight emergency vehicles or responders hit that week in the United States of America. Two of them was right here in Virginia, in Pennsylvania County, in our area. Um, so the first one was on October the eleventh, I believe. Uh, it was Virginia State Police. They were working a, uh, trucking trailer that was disabled. The trailer was hanging over in the road a little bit. They were blocking traffic till they could get, um, a tow truck there to move it, and, uh, somebody unattended, not paying attention, I guess, come through and struck, and one of the state troopers was in between the two vehicles and got pinned between them when the two vehicles struck, and, uh, at point of impact, he was running forty-seven miles an hour, but it slid over two hundred feet from what I was told, so, um, you know, the troop was lucky to be alive. He was medevaced out, sent to a trauma center, and, uh, from what I understand, doing well, but with a long, long road ahead of him. So that was one incident. Seventy-two hours later, or not even seventy-two hours later, on the thirteenth of October, one of our very own, uh, Pennsylvania County Fire Marshals, Mr. David Brooks, was blocking traffic for a motor vehicle accident. He was actually blocking behind one of my engines in Grutna, uh, in a bad spot on twenty-nine, and he was struck by a driver not paying attention, and, uh, glad, luckily, David wasn't really injured. I think he had to be checked out, and the other driver as well, but he wasn't severely injured, but the vehicle was totaled, if you've seen the pictures. I mean, it, it put the, uh, tailgate in the backseat with him, basically. So I just wanted to bring attention to it here, uh, for the ones listening. Take it back to your stations. I know, uh, we had an in-depth conversation at the last Association meeting about it. Uh, there's not but so much we can physically do out there on the roadways. Guys, we've got cones out, we've got vests on, we've got flashing lights, but people just don't put their cell phones down. They don't pay attention, and, uh, it's very dangerous, and it's to the point that it's more dangerous statistically speaking to s- put a truck on the highway blocking traffic than it is to send them in a house fire, a crew in a house fire. And so, um, we just gotta do a really good job to make sure we're working together and, um, really working with state police. I know, um, they are getting ready to roll out a heavy campaign on the move over law and paying attention and being attentive to the roadway, and so I just wanted to bring it here and try to, any channels that the county has to echo with through it, that we, we need the citizens to help us out, really pay attention. When you see flashing lights, even the tow truck drivers, I think they have it most dangerous sometimes, 'cause, and that's why we try to wait around until they absolutely got their vehicle removed, 'cause, I mean, they, they have to get in the road a lot of times to get the vehicle up on their truck, and I used to say that the drivers only paid attention to the blue lights, and that was it, and then I don't think they pay attention to those. So just wanted to bring those up, a- and, and I think, was it a construction worker was hit somewhere nearby, or something? It was an incident in Virginia recently, um, not far from here, so just wanted to shed some light on it. Any discussion on that? All right, thank you, gentlemen, and I appreciate the Association. They've been looking into that and ways we can help kinda curtail those incidents, and I know the state police, uh, Mr. Draper, we were lucky to have him. He's one of the fire chiefs in the county, and he also is sergeant for the state police, so he was able to give us a little insight. They're working on some things to maybe help with that. All right, that brings us down to the, be item F now. Brazwell Ambulance C I P request. This will be Director Key.
Yes, uh, Brazwell submitted a, uh, request for ambulance replacement funding for F Y twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, they're asking to replace a twenty-twelve ambulance. Um, I did attach the, their sheet, but I also attached the SOP behind it, so you could review that also. Um, their numbers are off just a little bit in their calculations, but they still, they met the minimum. They had sixty-two points, total points.
Is there any questions for the director on the C I P request? This is for Brazwell to purchase a new ambulance and replace their two thousand and twelve Ford with a hundred and nine thousand five hundred miles. Their last, uh, award was in two thousand and eight, and as you heard the director, they met the minimum, which is forty points required to be eligible for the C I P funding. Just so the commission understands, um, basically comes to us, we make the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, yes or no, and then the board ultimately decides, um, to grant that money. Any discussion on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the C I P request.
I'll make a motion then. I'll move that, uh, we, uh, endorse Brazwell's request and forward it, our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for them to purchase the ambulance.
Okay, I have your motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second by Mr. Atkins. Is there any discussion on a motion?
Mr. Chairman meets the criteria, correct?
Yes, sir. They, they meet the criteria. And, and just so everybody knows in the audience, the, the C I P request for the ambulances goes off of a point system. That point system is sort of mirrored towards the same way the state does their awards, um, for, for funding, um, the, uh, Rescue Squad Assistance Fund through the state of Virginia. It's, you have to meet a point system. This is very mirrored towards this. The commission put this into place several years ago, just to keep it fair across the board.
Mr. Chairman, if one day replaced, what, they're gonna replace, what's the plans for that one, do you know?
Chris, do you know?
I, I'm assuming they're gonna sell it. I haven't heard definite, but I'm sure they will.
Isn't that part of the package? Does it, does it have to be sold, or does that have to be spoken about?
That's what's included in the paperwork in the SOP. That's the way it's wrote.
Yeah, 'cause we have another agency tonight coming to discuss that with us, so I guess we need to know that, um, if that's a, that's a game plan. All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Uh, I guess we, we're all going to the assumption that it's, that's the ambulance is gonna be sold, so it's still, it meets the requirements. We've got a motion and a second, so as everybody good, I'm gonna go ahead and call a vote. All right, caller, caller roll, please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes. Thank y'all. That motion carries. Next one, be item G, Blair's Ambulance. Next one, be item G, Blair's Ambulance CIP request, we've got Director Key, but Chief Fowler's here as well, if you have any questions.
All right, we're requesting funding to re-chassis, um, an ambulance, this is a 2016, when I filled the paperwork out, it was ninety-six thousand two hundred and some miles, we're putting about eleven thousand miles a year on it, and it's gonna be about eighteen months before I can have your truck, so, it's gonna be around a hundred and fifteen thousand miles time it gets here. It's running more calls this year so far, but around eight hundred calls last year in the fiscal year. We're gonna send that truck off and have a new chassis put under it, have a box redone inside and out, all the electrical replaced, all the interior replaced, but that'll save us two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, I think it is.
Chief Fowler, who are y'all using for your remounting, if you don't mind me asking?
Bron, the manufacturer that built the truck originally.
Nice. Yeah, I feel like that's important, every time you do the remounts, it's, it's best for it to go back where it was originally built, so that's good. All right, any questions for Chief Fowler on the CIP request, as you can see there again, they've met fifty-six points, which is over the forty points, and just so everybody understands, they do get a five, five-point bonus if you are remounting or replacing a remount, 'cause that's good faith that you're trying to stretch those dollars best as possible and use that equipment up to its most, you know, usability, so, um, they get their bonus points there, but they meet the requirements, any discussion? All right, not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the CIP request for Blair's.
I'll make a motion, we approve the CIP request for Blair's for fire and rescue.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second over here, okay, I got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Jason Lovler. Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
Coleman Mayke.
Yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen, that brings us down to item, uh, let's see, H now, that would be Chatham Ambulance CIP change request, Director Key, you wanna touch on this, and then?
I think we've got representative from Chatham here, um, their original was asked for, to replace a, an ambulance, um, after getting their ambulance in, they've now requested to keep their old ambulance.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Elizabeth Durham, I'm the Public Information Officer for Chatham Rescue Squad, so, in February, March, we approached the Fire and Rescue Association asking if we could keep our old ambulance, a 2011 Ford, we had, um, applied for CIP funding, at this point in February or March, um, we had tried to sell it for, um, a couple of months after applying, and no one would buy the truck for the price that we had listed, or their board wouldn't have approved it, um, et cetera, et cetera. So, we approached, um, the association, and they said if we could get our call volume up in six months, we would revisit it in March. Um, we got our call volume up, um, we actually saw use for the truck, and, um, since we revisited it in October last week, and I made a motion to amend the CIP funding request that instead of selling, um, what is called one-two-seven, would be renamed one-two-six, that we would keep it as a third-run reserve truck, um, this truck would be ineligible for CIP funding again, um, and this would also be as a reserve truck for other agencies in the county, a lot of agencies have issues with their trucks, um, they all have two or are down to one, and if something happens, they're not able to run calls, so we would like to share this truck not only with our agency, if something happens to one of our vehicles, but also with the county, so they are able to run their nine-one-one EMS calls as well. So, it'd be shared as a BLS truck, um, and it would be to the discretion of that agency to put narcotics and drugs on that, um, ambulance as well, um, and we do meet the points with forty-four points to, um, keep the truck and go, go that route. Do you have any questions?
So, you've already replaced this truck?
Yes, so we got a new, um, 2025 Demir's ambulance, um, in March, no, yes, March, I believe.
And that truck's in service, correct?
Yes, sir. And this, um, other truck, um, at the 2011, is on reserve status by Virginia Office of EMS, so, it is completely functional, it just needs some lights, um, replaced, and we can apply for grants to get the truck hopefully operational by December.
And equipment-wise, it would, you say it would be, uh, it would be a reserve, so it would, it essentially has equipment on it, and it's still licensed, so...
Yes, sir.
So, it has the equipment on it, essentially, if we had an ambulance at another agency, I'm gonna use mine, Gruttna went down, I could call you, minus the drugs, because the narcotics have to be assigned to the agency themselves, but minus narcotics, I could come pick that truck up and it's fully stocked, I just need my monitor and my drugs, basically, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it has, um, a stretcher on it currently, it's, um, using like the anchor, it's not a power load right now, um, we had switched the power load from that truck to the new, um, ambulance that we, we received, so hopefully we will get a power load in, um, to make our lives a little bit easier, um, and it doesn't have a compax box, and it doesn't have the locking system, but there is a lock, like a three-digit code that you can put on, so it's still locked per, um, per the standards, but not by the, the digit code that we all got in our trucks. But if you needed it today, you could come get it, it's in service.
What is, uh, Director Key, what does the guideline say on, or do we have one?
There is nothing about, uh, keeping the ambulance, it, it all deals with replacing ambulances. So, nobody's ever asked for add an additional ambulance.
Basically, this is not an additional funding, it's just a request to maintain what you have.
Yeah, they, they changed the process after, I mean, they'd already received the funding, the truck's been, you know, they've already received the funding and everything for it, so, that was why I was, I asked them to come back and present it to y'all, because they changed their scope after the initial process.
Now, um, this is gonna set a precedent, so, you know, we got Brazwell coming up, what are we gonna do?
I guess the question is, what does it mean if they decide they wanna keep the unit rather than sell it, because that money, if we tell them to sell it, that does not actually go back towards the county or anything like that, that just goes to that agency anyway, correct?
Yeah, most agencies have used it to pay on the next ambulance.
Help on the next unit, yeah, okay.
They just use it to subsidize it, to build it, 'cause this, this, the CIP is not gonna pay for it completely, so they use to sell that and then put that money towards a new one, either buy equipment towards a new one.
And y'all did list this truck for sale, you said, right?
Yes, we listed it for sale, um, four separate times, we had it on a website, we had, um, a company from West Virginia that contacted us, um, their engine had blown, and then he couldn't get the board to approve it, they approved to fix their truck instead, um, we had someone else contact us, and they didn't wanna pay the price, they wanted to pay twenty thousand dollars less than what the truck is worth, um, that's not worth it to us at that point, and then we had another company, um, out of Nevada that contacted us wanting to buy the truck, um, but they wanted us to foot the bill for transporting it to Nevada, and then their board didn't approve it, so we tried three to four separate times, um, with different agencies, and either they didn't wanna pay the price that we set, um, or they just didn't wanna get it at all, like their board wouldn't approve it, which is, you know, that's fine, that's their board's decision.
I mean, I can understand, you know, the, uh, agency wanting to keep it and keep it in service or what have you, to me, that does show that, you know, you know, value in what assets you have, and you're maintaining it in service or what have you for the county. Uh, I realize that we'll set a precedent, but I would recommend that this allowance and possibly go back to revisit that stipulation, so, I mean, I, I make a motion that we accept this.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Right off the cuff, I, I, I think it's a good idea if they kept it, if, if anybody in the county can use it as a backup unit, but I'm not a big advocate of, of changing things in the middle of the stream, I'd like to see us table this for thirty days, uh, let it lay over, and just think about it for a little bit, uh, before we, uh, make a decision.
How much expense is, you know, required to keep this truck, I mean, you got maintenance on it, and you've got, um, I guess, insurance on it, so, you know, you gotta figure that too, is it, is it, is it feasible to pay the extra, to keep a extra truck, have they got a place to house it? Other thing I was gonna ask is showing zero hours on the engine, so has this engine been replaced in this truck?
No, since, um, this is a, not a replacement, uh, Chris Key asked that I did not put any hours, since we're not replacing the truck, we're keeping it, uh, it has a hundred and seven thousand miles right now.
If you look on the second page, the page after that worksheet, there's, that's the original sheet they had submitted, I included that one, so you could see that was the original one, then this is their updated one.
Okay, I see it right there now.
Chief, I was gonna say, Chief Fowler, I, I think the association heard this, so you give a...
We, we discussed it, and she talked about the, the replacement or, or being able to allow somebody to use it, I guess I got a question before I go any further, if I wanna use that truck at Blair's, what did you say about the stretcher?
It's not a power load, it's manual.
So, it's a manual stretcher?
Right now.
So, we're gonna have to be real EMS providers when we use it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I got one of those at Gruttna, so, they don't like it, but I got one.
I understand that.
It's a striker stretcher itself, like, it will, like, roll out, but it's, has the anchor, the hose.
Okay, I understand that, um, and I guess my next concern is, in the meeting after the meeting, and I know you weren't privileged to it, but, that being said, some discussion ensued, the only drawback that the association expressed in the meeting after the meeting is, this truck has received CIP funding one time, it should be automatically taken out of the running for CIP funding again, to be replaced, so, three years down the road, if you need to replace that truck, you should be ineligible for CIP funding again.
Yes, we would absolutely agree to that, we would never, that would be double-dipping, and that would be unfair to other agencies who do need to replace a truck, we don't wanna harm our, um, our brothers and sisters in firing EMS, that's not fair to them.
And I don't mind telling you, I'm gonna need one in March for five months.
I know, I'm already thinking that far ahead.
And right now, they, right now, they want five thousand dollars every two weeks to rent an ambulance.
We're not charging that.
All right, so we, is there any other discussion in this direction? I do have a motion on the floor, so I, I understand, I heard Brian wants to table it for thirty days, but I, and then I had Coleman had made a motion, but I don't hear a second, so what's the, what's the commission's, uh, direction we wanna go here?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Alan's gonna second the motion, all right, any discussion on the motion? And the motion is to allow them to keep it, um...
With that stipulation.
With the stipulation.
And that we go back and visit that clause and...
Yeah, I do think that's the only concern, and, and, and I've talked to y'all a lot, I think it's a good idea, I appreciate the gesture, you couldn't sell it, you're willing to try to keep it in service, um, it is concerning, 'cause it's gonna cost you money, I mean, no matter what, it's gonna cost you money, and it costs the county money, um, to keep it, but as long as it's staying in service, being maintained correctly, and being allowed to use in the system, I don't see a problem with it, um, and I support it, and, and that being said, um, you know, I'm gonna support the motion if it goes through or was voted on, but, I do agree, you know, with everybody's concerns, we need to make sure we look into this further, 'cause others could and should, you know, if one agency can do it, why can't all come and ask, and I, and I really think it boils down to, um, it's kind of a case-by-case scenario, does it fit, you know, one, like you said, are you gonna have room to, to house it, I mean, y'all do, some agencies don't, I tell you right now, Gruttna, we can't keep anything, 'cause I'm not room of station, um, you know, are you gonna be able to keep it, how much is it gonna cost you every year to maintain it, um, depending on the age of the truck and how many miles, a, and so, you know, I think that's something we need to visit, but, but for this tonight, you know, I think I support it, or I do support it, any other discussion before we vote?
Director Key, uh, do you have any spare ambulances, I mean, I know you used to have some that they could use, uh...
Well, we've got two ambulances in reserve, but they, they rotate in and out every day, so, just due to maintenance on the, the frontline vehicles, we rotate them in and out, so...
And I mean, just looking at what we, what we just approved the CIP for here, you know, most when they get to a hundred thousand, they're looking at replacing them, and this one, you said it's got, what, a hundred and nine?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven, so, I mean, are we really getting what we need to be getting, you know?
We've got five ambulances now.
This is gonna set the tone for the rest of the times, you know, whatever we do, this is kinda gonna set the tone for it.
Yeah, I've got five ambulances right now that all got over a hundred thousand miles on them, so...
Well, that was my thinking, that with the stuff that we have now, and with this diesel fuel and this death fluid, you need a reserve ambulance, because them things are gonna turn to junk and break down, so, I, I mean, I'm for keeping a, uh, a reserve ambulance that other agencies in the county can use, because I tell you, if you got one, it's going to the shop, doesn't make no difference how new it is or how old it is, it's going.
And we already proved how useful it was to our agency, um, one weekend, we had a standby, uh, the newest truck was, um, getting maintenance at diesel engine, and we needed that, uh, third truck to run, uh, nine-one-one call, so we covered everything that weekend, even with the truck, um, out of service and maintenance, and that was maintenance that, that we had planned for for months, and didn't expect it to take as long as it did, which happens.
And that's, I know you understand this, but that's the biggest thing, so, so at Gruttna's, everybody understands, when we got the money for engine two-two-one, we did the same thing with engine two-two-three, we requested to keep it as a reserve, and I think that's proved it's worth every, I'm not gonna say every, I, I, probably half the stations in this county has ran that truck and some more getting ready to run it, and, uh, and it's, you know, it's there, first come, first served, we keep it stocked with tools, and it's a good running truck, it's old, but it's still running, and, um, that being said, though, you know, and that's kind of my motto with our truck, you know, it just needs to be understood that when somebody calls and needs it, you know, unless you're down a truck, that, that, it's, it's understood that, that truck goes.
Yes, first come, first served, just like Gruttna does.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
So, in the past, there have been other agencies that kept that vehicle, just like Chatham's requesting?
So, I don't know if it's happened with ambulances.
Or is it anything in writing that says that they can't, I ring, that's my next question, I mean, we know, we talk about setting a precedent, but if it's already been done, I mean, not setting a precedent.
We had Ringgold until, uh, early spring, we had three, and we have, uh...
So, y'all kept one of y'all's?
We did, but then it blowed up, same situation that we was talking about, so there were...
But if it blows up in their case, then they don't get any CIP funding for it?
No.
Correct, okay, I'm good.
Was that Ringo, excuse me, that Ringo, that one y'all bought, or one that it come through the CIP?
We bought it.
So, it didn't come through the CIP?
Well, I mean, I just think this is a good use for that truck, I mean, renaing, we had the opportunity to purchase a new truck, and rather than sitting out there, out there to sell it or junk it or what have you, we made effort to repurpose that by sending it out to southwest Virginia, so, they were delighted to get that, so, I mean, that's, I think, you know, these vehicles are bought to serve the community, or serve as citizens, and that's what the intent really is, so...
That truck's still running calls on the top of the mountain?
It is, yes, it is.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, I'm gonna call the vote, please.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Roland. Brian Shields.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
Coleman Mayke.
Yes, all right, that motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us down to item I, response coverage statistics, Director Key.
I've tried to provide the last two weeks of response statistics for fire and EMS, I've included them in your packet for your review, broken down to the EMS for, on one page and file on the next page, and then same way for the second week.
Any questions for the director on these call, call statistics in your packet? I will say, I appreciate everyone's efforts, if you look at those numbers, that's pretty strong efforts there across the board, I mean, I realize there's a few issues here and there, but, for the most part, you know, especially if you're looking at the fire department's responses there, it's pretty strong numbers. at the fire department's responses there, it's pretty strong numbers.
All right. Any questions before we move on to Item fourteen? Hearing none, that brings us down to closed session. Director Key. Okay, the Virginia Code legally allows public bodies to enter closed session for the protection of the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business. Accordingly, the following closed session is proposed. Under legal authority of Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, subject matters mutual aid responses, and purpose is a discussion evaluation of performance of departments. Uh, staff recommends that the Fire Rescue Commission enter a closed session on the above. We will need a motion, a second, and a vote to go into closed session. Okay, do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
All right, do I hear a second on the motion? You got a second over here, all right? Call, any discussion on the motion? All right, call roll, please.
Jimmy Atkins?
Yes.
Ben Meeks?
Yes.
Alan Casper?
Yes.
Ward Roland? Brian Shields?
Yes.
Kermit King?
Yes.
Steve Stallings?
Yes.
Coleman Mayke?
Yes. All right, thank you, we'll be in closed session. Hopefully we'll be back shortly for those in the audience, but thank you for being here, if you're not here.
Brings us down to item fifteen. We're going to be returning to open session and closed session certification. Okay, be it resolved that the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Fire and Rescue Commission on October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, the commission hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Genus Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any commissioner believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating that the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the commission's minutes.
Jimmy Atkins.
Yes.
Ben Meeks.
Yes.
Alan Casper.
Yes.
Ward Rowland.
Yes.
Brian Shields.
Yes.
Coleman Mayhew.
Yes.
Kermit King.
Yes.
Steve Stallings.
Yes.
All right, thank y'all. That brings us down to item sixteen, other matters from the commissioners. We'll start off here on my right side. Chief Fowler.
Folks, I just asked y'all to keep your trooper that was struck in mind. Keep him in your thoughts and prayers. His spirits are great from what I understand, and he's working really hard. Keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Keep these folks out here every day in your thoughts and prayers. To those of you sitting at home watching us, please put your phones away. Please pay attention. Please move over when we're in the highway, and please slow down. I was at a call yesterday afternoon at five forty-five, and myself and a deputy sitting in the roadway over five hundred feet of visual sight distance, and a tractor trailer run up behind us. One slowed down in the road. The second one came along. He slid for over a hundred feet trying to keep hitting the one in front of him, and the one in front of him drove off, and he missed it. Please pay attention when we out here in the road. I don't worry as much about my guys and girls at structure fires as I do in the highway. People don't slow down. They sitting in their cars. They don't realize they passing us sitting still. They passing us at seventy miles an hour. They don't realize it. It doesn't take but a second. Somebody's lost their life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. For our supervisor, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. Appreciate all y'all doing over here on this committee, man. Really, learning stuff every day from y'all, you know. But also keep Burt Sellers in your thoughts and prayers, and everybody's prayers work for Lee Vogel. I say he came back. He was in a meeting the other night, so that was a great sign. So just, everybody just keep doing what you're doing, and just ask God for a little more help, man. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Casper.
Not much. I know you find that hard to believe, but just with what Dean was saying, please be careful out there. Last night, brush fire. We out on forty. We had people out there flagging. We had cars that went right, I mean, they're out there with vests, signs, lights, everything. They didn't even slow down. They just blew right past them, so, at highway speed, so, just be careful.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Atkins.
Going on what Murray said about Burt, I talked to his son before I came to the meeting, and Burt Sellers is doing very well. They got him up. He's walking a little bit. He's getting stronger and stronger every day. Don't know what the timeframe on the healing process will be, but he's doing excellent right now. Just still keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll come back to you vice chair. Director Key.
Just to give you an update on Brooks, the fire marshal that was involved in the wreck the other day. He's still a little sore. He did return back to work, so he's up and doing good now. And also, I heard from the Brazel Fire Department, they are replacing that ambulance. There will not be an additional ambulance.
Good deal. Thank you, sir. Ms. Caldwell, anything for us?
We've had a lot going on, but we learned at the Ag Center and at VOTEC, we had interaction with the kids in the criminal justice class and the EMT class, and gave them an overview of communications. But we learned a lot of people don't know they can text nine-one-one. So if you're in a situation where you can't call, you can text.
Awesome. Thank you. Good information there. Mr. Rowland.
Well, I gotta say, I had the opportunity a week ago to see our first responders in action, and I'm real proud of them. I got to see a lot of different changes and things since when I used to run, and they were very patient and explained a lot of stuff to me, and it's quite a change. They're doing a great job. I'm real proud of the first responders.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Stallings.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what everybody else said. Burt's a good friend of mine, and I talked to Peyton also, and it's really encouraging what he's telling us, and just keep him in your prayers. And also, I want to say that I'm honored to be on this commission, and to sit here and to hear some of the cost-saving measures that these guys brought tonight, you know, re-chassis an ambulance or whatever, you know. It's pretty encouraging to hear that, and even the extra ambulance for Chatham, I thought that was a great idea. So I think that's one reason we're here, is to try to help support the fire departments, but actually save the county some money too when it's possible. And it's just really encouraging for me to hear all that going on, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also thank a lot of Commissioner Sellers and his family, and pray for his continued improvement. And I know when you're in the highway, it's a dangerous place for the men and women, the volunteers, the public safety. And if you don't believe it, just stand out there for a few minutes and just watch, and continue prayers for the trooper that got hit, and also for Mr. Brooks, so he can continue, he'll continue to improve. But just a thank you to the volunteers for answering the calls each and every day. It doesn't go unnoticed. The public safety, thank you Director Key, Chief Key, for your staff and what they do, and always thank your dispatchers. And sometimes they don't get all the credit that they truly deserve, and to law enforcement, the public safety across the United States. It's something we need to pray for daily. But teach the commissioner, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coleman Mayhew.
Just like to say thank you to first responders for their dedication, and thank the community for their support. Quite a few agencies over the past week and a half, two weeks have had fundraisers, and we've had a very positive response, and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair, I'm King.
Yes, I still like to say keep Commissioner Sellers in our prayers, and, you know, I hope everything continues to go well for him and his family. I know they've been through an ordeal, but I've always said Burt was tough. You know, he'll fight till the end, so, you know. But I'd like to, like I said, say to the family, we are still praying for him to continue to get better. All our volunteers, thank you for what you do, public safety, our dispatchers, you know, we all in it together, so, you know. And like I said, I still pray for us every day on the road. Like I said, it's just hitting closer to home now. We've been reading about it, but now it's here. You know, it's probably not one of us here that hadn't been, you know, your pants hadn't been clipped or something, you know, your shirt been tugged by a passing vehicle, but, you know, we kind of shrugged it off now. You know, we really got to think about that, and keep our volunteers and all our public safety people, you know, in our thoughts, and keep somebody to keep us from getting hurt. And I don't know, like I said, what we gonna do for the public, but, I mean, I'm on the road most of the time, and I see it every day. They still, nobody's paying any attention to anything, you know. They've done cell phones, if you see you holding it, but they still holding it up like this and still riding. So, or either it's something that's distracted their attention. So just, you know, to all our volunteers and public safety, you know, we need to look after one another, and we can replace vehicles. We don't want to, but we can, but we can't replace not a one of us. So we'll just continue to pray and look after each other.
Thank you, sir. All good comments tonight. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Very good meeting, a lot of good information, and I think we got some stuff accomplished tonight. Thank you, Chris and Scott, for what y'all do and your staff. Appreciate y'all working with us. Chief Fowler and Damian with the association, appreciate what they're working on. I did want to announce, the association is now doing quarterly trainings for the officers in the county. They're getting all the departments together, their officers, chief level officers and whatnot, and they're going over specialty different types of training, and I think they're going to be working on insurance and the forms and what's required, and they're actually going to meet this Saturday at Chatham Fire Department, nine o'clock, eight o'clock, eight o'clock this Saturday morning. So anybody doesn't know about it, I think they've sent it out a few times, but please attend. And Chief Fowler, I've been told it's going to get you a biscuit too, so that's an extra there. But I'm glad they're doing that, just to get everybody working together, hopefully on the same page. And really, if you listen to what has went on, really in the last two years with the tornado that come through our county, you've had the shooting incident with the deputies, you've had now a fire marshal struck, a state police officer struck, I mean, stuff that we hear of all over the country, but not usually right here in Pennsylvania County. A little small rural Pennsylvania County. We usually take care of each other pretty good, but it's closer to home now, guys. It's happening. And Bill Van Giles, who's a flight paramedic, very good friend of mine, he volunteers with us at Gruttner now, older gentleman but wise, and he says something all the time to my younger guys that I think needs to be remembered. You've got to stop thinking that it can't happen to us, because it can happen, and it's going to happen if we let our guard down. So I do thank God that we haven't had any first responders killed yet, and I hope we can do everything we can in our power for it not to happen. But we need the public's help. We need them to put their phones down, to pay attention to the roadway, and do all they can do to help us out. Again, when you see those flashing lights, slow down. That's the first step, and then move over if you need to, and give traffic, you know, give them room, give the first responders room. As Chief Fowler said, when you're running seventy miles an hour, and you rocking a fire truck, what do you think it's doing to the individual standing there, and they working on a patient or working on a car? I mean, it's crazy, but it happens. But thank you to the commission, and you guys, again, you always come out strong, and I really miss Burt being here. Burt has been one of the originals on the commission since the very first commission way back when, and he's always been witty and sharp and quick on it, and brings good conversation. So I'm just happy to hear that he's doing well, and continue to send prayers his way to him and his family, that he'll make a full recovery, and hopefully be sitting back in that chair sooner than later. Thank you to the volunteers and all the stations out there. I attended the association meeting recently. I think I counted seventeen agencies was there out of twenty-one. That's amazing, guys. Hopefully we can get to twenty-one one day, but that's really good. We need to participate with that body and work together. Thank you to Chatham for putting that truck up and offering. I think that's good, like Mr. Stallings said, anything we can do to work together and save each other money and the county money, that's kind of the goal too, and to save lives and property, obviously. Thank you to the dispatchers. They have really come in clutch. On every call, they're the first ones to take the call in and hear the horrors on the other end, and then they get us all the help that we need. So we appreciate them being a lifeline for us out there. Without them, we'd be in a world of hurt. And I just ask that everybody to continue to pray for the state trooper that was hit, and Mr. Brooks, I think, I've talked to David a few times, but he took a hard lick, and he was very lucky he wasn't injured worse than he was. And so continue to pray for those fellows as well. And with that, we'll conclude the meeting. Meeting adjourned.